Ladies and gentlemen, by the power of the Lord, we place standing, pledge allegiance to all of our inpatient and American citizens. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Father for the many blessings you have given us. Keep us always mindful of the needs of others. And thank you for this opportunity to take care of the people in this community, with this town council meeting. We pray that they perceive what is right, have the courage to pursue it, and strength to accomplish it all to the glory of your name. And we thank you Father for loving us. Help us to love others as you love us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to introduce.
This is Mr. Rusty Hatfield. Mr. Hatfield had wanted to come and help us be our departmental chaplain. Mr. Hatfield was actually my high school teacher. I was telling him the other day, of course he didn't remember, I was the only ninth grader or the first ninth grader that he allowed to be on the 16 Ts, which was an honor to me. So it was an honor to have Mr. Hatfield come. I'm sorry. No, I was really in the ninth grade. We do thank you, Mr. Hatfield, for coming to the board. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you for allowing me to serve. The good Lord called me to the ministry to serve. And so this is just an extension of that, and I hope I can be a positive role model for the officers and all who they come in contact with. And Stan, you know, I have to hear an aid now. So maybe I wasn't hearing things. And thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of special presentations at this time. I'll ask Sean Durham for the YMCA update. Come forward, please.
Hello, and thank you for your time, and I'll probably respect for a little. You have a Kenzie, we've been a long wait, and especially about these days. We're gonna why it's always good news. I'm pretty sure that, of course, we have to, we've been here a couple of months ago at the Heart of YMCA. It's a pleasure to see him being acknowledged and continuing to serve. I want to talk to you a little bit about 2017 at the YMCA. I watched the last town council meeting and wanted to make sure that I answered most of those questions the best that I could. 2017, our membership and our program participation was up. That's not just up in that year, it's up over a 70-year period. Not only did that create our revenue to be greater, but we also come in under budget and every expense because we manage really hard. We also had a successful annual campaign. We were able to raise $60,000. Every YMCA raises about 10 to 15% of their annual budget through an annual campaign. That's what makes it the community of the YMCA. A big year last year, 65,000 visitors through the door that scanned in, logged in for the workout. We're close to our 10th year, we're coming close to a million people coming through that facility. That 65,000 members, they worked out and took a class. That doesn't count all the kids that were in the program that just come in our facility. All their guests, all their parents or grandparents that come in there and gather at the YMCA. The Y continues to grow partnerships and collaborations throughout the county. We're partners with the town of Tazewell, we always have been, and hopefully we always will be. Tazewell County, the Sheriff's Department, Tadano Crane, Carillion, Joey Manufacturing, Eric Chau, Taz County Public Schools, Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens, Lynch Valley Medical Center, Walmart, Southwest Virginia Community College, Coglin Mountain Health Services, and Heartland Rehab. That's just touching on some of the partners. Some of the folks that have businesses in this room are members, some of them have our partners, corporate partners with us. They invest in their employees because they know that that's how they gain new employees and they'll retain them. And that's key. So we feel like the Y serves a valuable part in this community and being an economic driver. The Y staff leads in a lot of volunteerism. You see all these same faces all the time, just like our churches, same people do all these things all the time, right? Well, the same in a small town. I see you all on Main Street in the cruiser, but I may have saw Y staff there with Y volunteers shirts on. In our Main Street moments, in the various 5Ks, you seem to be the expert in all the 5Ks and all the communities. That goes from Bluefield to Richlands, then we go and we volunteer. And of course, always we look forward to our day of work with the past town affairs. It's a big day. Especially if we get to meet your neighbors in the community. And I love it, and they all think I'm crazy for it. The Y continues to go into the schools, this is one of our best partnerships, and it's also one of the places where we have the most opportunity. We go to the public schools and the private schools. We do campaigns called Red Your Bed where we try to teach kids how much sugar is in all the drinks that they're drinking, not just the soft drinks, but the sweet teas and the lemonades and the sports drinks. We have a Healthy Kids Day. We do a fact and fitness in the schools where we go in on a Friday and we do an educational component, and then we get them active for a few minutes. Because we believe in it, we know it'll change lives, and we know that the future depends on it, how healthy we are. It's the only thing that we can't change and snap for finger. Out of 131 counties in the state of Virginia, we continue to rake very close to the bottom. But since the YMCA's been here, we have gone from 129 out of 131 up to 120. Satisfied? Heck yeah. Can we do better? Absolutely. Won't change overnight. There's a lot of factors into that. Other programs that we did, taught over 100 kids to swim last year. That's 100 families' lives that may be changed. I won't be satisfied until we teach every kid in that county to swim. I don't even help doing it. I can't do it all. I don't have the resources, the people to do it, or the finances to do it. That's why we do an annual campaign. That's why we have point of partners, that's how we get it done. We hosted one swim meet all year, our high school swim meet. This might be the most successful sports program they had at the school this year. They sent about six kids to the state meet, and they set some records that had stood for a long time. We hosted one meet out there that brought people from Wise, Big Stone Gap, Bluefield, and Rycote, wherever that's at. But I knew this, Tazewell didn't have a bigger supporter than Sean Durham. I don't pull that down. You know where I sent all those people when they were finished with that swim meet? Right down Main Street. We started a martial arts class. We had a gentleman named Terry Kirk, and if anyone in here knows anything about martial arts, he is at this level with martial arts. He's bringing his gift to the YMCA. He's opened it up to all memberships. It's not an extra fee. If you remember the Y, you can take Mr. Kirk's class. Anyone outside of that can also. Next week, we'll be hosting for the second time the Scripps National Spelling Meet. We hosted two art camps this year, and I'm proud to say both of those were full. We had to stop taking folks. Of course, we continue to have some gardening and some lungings. And we continue to partner with Concord and Bluefield College and Concord College on volleyball camps, basketball camps. Continue just to bring other folks in. We do a push-pull competition. That's a strong man contest, right? That thing draws originally. It dips over into McVal County for contestants to come. They came as far from Rollup and from Agman this year to compete at the Tazewell YMCA. Can't fail to mention Reverend Johnson's Bible study that takes place out there every Wednesday. For the many paintings that we've had, or birthday parties, baby showers, or members' celebrations. All this is done by eight staff, full-time, and about 30 part-time folks, and those hours vary, and 12 instructors. And of course, a lot of dedicated Y volunteers that serve on our board and help us with events. We also have a lot of laws out there. This year, we had two people on our staff pass away. We had family members on our staff pass away. And we, of course, had members that lose loved ones. And you know where they come? They come to the Y. They come out there to be loved on, be supported, be encouraged. And that's a big thing to do. We don't sell equipment, weight loss plan. We sell lifestyle. It's a healthy lifestyle. Not just healthy to be in the Y, to exercise, healthy to be there. Somewhere where you go, somebody out there right now has cancer. Someone out there just lost a spouse. Someone out there is mad for their life. Someone out there is lonely right now. Someone's hungry out there right now. And someone's going home to a situation that's not as good as some of the ones that we're all going home to. That's what we do out there. And anytime that you want to be, come out there, I urge you, get involved, get engaged. My door's always open. One thing that I would like to address, I've seen you always come here after complainers. When I was growing up, when people were laying with complainers, we called them out and we avoided them. The Y is something very, very positive. Someone comes to you with a complaint, please, come talk to me. My door's open. Please, come out there and get involved, come see what they do. See what we've done. Everyone's on this board, everyone in this room right now. That Y, there's a little bit of everybody in it. Long before Sean Durham ever got here, and long after Sean Durham got gone, hopefully there'll be a YMCA. That's all the good news I have.
So hope luck, Sean.
Thank you, Father.
Next on agenda is a present question, Kitty Barker from the Heart of Appalachia. I think she has a presentation.
Thank you guys for having me today. Kitty couldn't make it. I'm Nikki Hicks, I'm the Business Marketing Coordinator for Heart of Appalachia. Kitty and I will be going to all of the town council meetings and administrative meetings for the counties. Here we are, we're split in two different directions tonight, so I do apologize, Kitty couldn't make it, she has to go to a different one. And hopefully this'll work, we've been playing with it every year. But I'm actually here to make a budget request for Heart of Appalachia Tourism. We are requesting from every town and every county $2,500 to help support our efforts. And what I'm going to show you on the packet and on the PowerPoint is some information about what we have done over the past year or a few years, and what we're doing this year. In the packet, there is a request letter, there's also our summary for Tazewell, which includes here in Tazewell County plus Tazewell, and then the information on our investment plan and our budget request. There's also some brochures in there that we have done. We produce in-house ourselves. We have, do have a graphics artist who does all this, so I'm going to get started and see if this works. And our mission for our tourism community is we want to get more heads and beds, and we want to get more people into our community spending the night so that they have to stay overnight, they have to eat here, they do all of our attractions in outdoor communities. And more visitors at attractions, more overnights and lodging, that is what we are wanting. Our mission, we want to utilize tourism to improve economic growth from seven counties and one city in the whole field, serving tourism industry in Lee's Bay, and by the way, our coves in Scott County, Russell, Wise, Dickinson, the Cannon, Tazewell, and the City of Norton. We're hoping that this will help increase our meals and lodging taxes, and increase the number of business and increase jobs within our communities. Our marketing focus for 2018, this is our 25th anniversary. The Heart of Appalachia was established in 1993 as a tourism authority by the General Assembly, so we're very excited to be celebrating that this year. We have new logos that we're going to be rolling out, plus some new exciting things for our 25th anniversary. We also promote our Appalachian Backroads, that's our motorcycles, which I know you guys know a lot about up here with the Back of the Dragon. We also promote our Spearhead Trails and our outdoor recreation. What we do, how do we promote this? We promote on our websites. We actually have two websites. We have the Heart of Appalachian website plus Appalachian Backroads website. We also help maintain the Spearhead Trails website through social media, published brochures, trade shows. We just actually got back from Chicago, Cleveland, and Washington DC promoting their Appalachian Backroads and helping the Tazewell County folks promote Back of the Dragon. We do TV and radio, and videos and press releases. Our 25th anniversary is coming up, and some of the things that we're doing, we asked some of our tourism directors to help us come up with 25 vacation trip ideas, two from each locality, two vacation sweepstakes, giveaways, and photo contests with 12 winners. And the winners of those photo contests will get a $25 gift certificate. Those are just small things that we do. We do some really big things too. Our 25th anniversary celebration will be November 10th at the Russell County Conference Center. We're actually calling it our Crazy Pants Bash. It's business on top, party on the bottom. So that was just a little play on words we have there. And what we're doing is we're bringing in our local restaurants, our local vineyards, our breweries, and our wineries together, and we're going to showcase them, and we're having Bob and Sally auction with us. So we're really excited about that, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun for our localities. We did get the Crush Friday grant, the $10,000 grant from the Virginia's for Lovers Tourism. Basically, we're asking everybody not to waste their vacation days, plan your weekend, and come visit us. We're hosting our Crush Fridays for all the localities, something to do throughout the whole year. We have three a month we're doing for all 12 months. We also have, we're also featuring the unique lodging, the local eateries, outdoor recreation, the events and festivals, historical experiences, spirits, and activities. So one thing we do ask from our communities is to be sure to let us know, have a calendar of events, so let us know what's happening, so we can get that information out there and to use it on the Crush Friday. We also partnered with our communities through Blue Ridge Outdoors. All of these dates that are up there, the issues that are coming out. So what we did was we paid half for our localities, then we're able to get a quarter page ad for $500, which actually is a little more than half of what we paid. It's a $1,200 ad, so all the localities that wanted to participate in that actually only had to pay $500 and we picked up the rest. And they got to pick their month, and we're going in, it's part of our Crush Friday for Blue Ridge Outdoors. So we're very excited about that. New into 2018 are back Appalachian Backroads and sports car routes. So we have a new, brand-new updated website. We also have a new brochure that is actually enbrought to our building. It's supposed to be delivered any time now, so every time an UPS truck comes up, we're like, is that our new brochure? So we're really excited about that. We've also have partnerships with a lot of the dealers, and we have merchandise and valleys coming up in all the communities. This brochure is very exciting. It's a map that we went in with our runner to help make. And if you pull it open, there's 14 routes. And one of those routes, of course, is Back of the Dragon. It's our most popular route on here. And what we try to do is we get, try to get people to look at these routes, come in, plan a vacation here. We have so many motorcycles that come into the area, we're so excited about it. We want them to not only do Back of the Dragon, but do all 13 other routes and stay for a week as opposed to just come in and stay in for a day or a weekend. And we're actually planning, doing a lot of trip planning with motorcycle groups. They call us, come into the office, and even sports cars, classic sports cars. We have a group coming in in October. We sit down with them, we tell them what's available. They all usually want to ride, and even down the miles, and it's very exciting to see these groups actually coming in. The new maps that we're, brochures that we're doing is going to have, actually, each route on its own page with all the destination and lodging per route. This is just one big map of all the destination and lodging on it. So each route's going to have its own special page. Spearhead Trails, we have five off-road trails that are built, Leva Cannon, Dickinson, Tazewell, and Wise. We are working on Russell County, hopefully that's going to happen before we know it. And we produce websites, maps, brochures, ads, and trade shows for those. There are also, Spearhead is also building equestrian trails at Scott, Hynott, Dickinson, Lee, and Wise, and Milton Viking Projects, and Big Stone, building hiking trails, map road trails. We also are doing, Spearhead is also working on water paddling sports river access points. And we also, Heart of Appalachia's working on all the hiking trails. We're trying to map all the hiking trails in our communities. We have actually paid someone to actually come in, do all the trails, because what happens is they know where the trails are, they know where the trailhead is, but that's all they know. They don't know where the elevation of the trails are, they don't know if it's a hard trail for their children to try to be on, they don't know where to park, they don't know if there's a restroom nearby. So we're trying to encompass all that in the whole region. Brad Deal is actually, we have contracted with him to come in and do the whole eight localities, to come in and do drone footage. He's going to do drone footage of all eight localities that you guys will be able to have access to if you want that, and do videos. We're really excited about that. We're asking you all to invest in the Heart of Appalachia marketing program with the $2,500 ask. We've asked our localities to come up with three to five trip ideas for Crush Friday to vacation ideas for several days, a calendar of events, we need that from all of our localities, photos and any videos. We have a lot of localities that are actually doing photo contests to get more photos. Tourism asset inventory. Next week, we have Young Strategies coming here. They're actually going to be in Tazewell on Thursday, or is it Friday? They're going to be in Tazewell County Thursday and Friday. I think they're going to be in Tazewell on Friday. And basically, Berkeley, the man, what he does is he comes in and he looks at all the localities, he does destination planning, he tells us what's good, what assets are there, he looks at our leaders in all the communities, he's nationwide, and we, Heart of Appalachia has paid for him to come in, and he's doing all the eight localities. He's going to come back with a plan for each region, tell you what's good, what's bad, what's ugly, and what we can do to fix it, make it better, and make more money and people to come in. And basically, he's going to be doing that in a three-year process. He's going to give each locality their own plan, plus the whole region their own plan. And we do create a marketing plan and share social media. And that is us. There's four of us in the office now, and we're very excited to have four of us in the office. That means we're growing, and we have a lot of really amazing things happening. Do you have any questions? Do we talk really fast and fast? I don't know, just get through that.
Your presentation.
Thank you.
We're actually in our budget process and, uh, we're, we're leaving that Saturday thing on, all the budget requests.
That's amazing. Please keep us in mind, we do what we can for all of our localities. And if you have any questions for us as you go, please don't hesitate, you want business cards in there to ask us. We would love to hear your comments and see what we can do or do more. That's what we want to do. If it's coming, I know you all have been talking about events here, but it's come and help you promote your events, get the work out there as much as we possibly can, we definitely do that. That's what we're here for.
We sure have a lot of events.
That's good stuff.
Ma'am, I'm curious, do you change your presentation for each locality?
Yes, we do. Did you just notice?
Yeah, it's a nice touch.
Yeah, I learned that tomorrow. I learned that in morning.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the October NBC request. I guess the chamber of, uh, which blankets?
Yeah, while she's walking up, there were, she's got another, I don't know, she got two or three requests coming, I don't know if I can present them, but if you'll recall last year when the Seven approached the town about ABC and had events, the brewery's in the same position, just like I said about the Seven, but if we're going to shut down the street, I think they should still be able to operate and function. So if we could do it in that same way for events, at least if it turns over, we'd do it again.
I'm here on behalf of the Tazewell Area General of Commerce to request your permission for to have the third annual October Fest, October the 6th. We're requesting the use of Main Street for this event. It will be from 4:00 to 10:00 PM on that Saturday. Last year and the year before, we had extremely successful events, a great, a great time we had by all, I think. We enjoyed the volunteers, I as a volunteer very much enjoyed it. It was, it was very well attended, and we expect that to grow as we progress with this event. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I know one of the questions that came out from last year is the unlimited amount of alcohol. I hope that's addressed.
We have changed that, we've addressed that this year. We have an unlimited amount, we have 20 drinks per ticket, and so that has been addressed.
20 drinks per ticket?
Twenty.
Which is three ounces per drink?
Yes.
Three ounces.
Three ounces.
Sixty ounces.
Yes.
That'd make me drunk.
Would it?
That's what it was the first year, is that correct?
That's what it was the first year. Actually, I think it was 25 the first year, and we decreased it to 20, yes.
Okay, any questions?
I'll make a motion if we approve the request.
You have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? You're not, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Nay. Again, I'll tell you, reading I say nay is because of deal.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, next on the agenda is to put funding in the local government, education week, and our reduced population, and I, whereas since the colonial period, Tomwell of Virginia has closely held institutions in local government, and whereas local governments throughout Tomwell provide valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve, and whereas the citizens' services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreation opportunities, and educating local children are most often delivered at the local level, and whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, the Virginia General Assembly on February 29th, 2012 designated the first weekend April as a local government education week in Virginia. And whereas April the 2nd, 2008 was the creation of the Council of Manager, form of government in a city of state, therefore making the first week of April appropriate for this destination. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the Tazewell Town Council that April 1st through 7th, 2018 is hereby designated as local government education weekend. Be it further proclaimed that the Tazewell Town Council and the Tazewell County School Board will partner to promote civic education and engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government's strength, the sense of community, and engage in the next generation of local government managers adopted on this day. I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation.
No move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here and now, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's last year, but the year before last, we had several of the history series classes came to town, and they actually went to different locations, and we would set something up for that. Okay, we'll move on to public comment regarding the Time Warner Spectrum. Any one?
Start a line over here somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. Great for you, I already how we always supposed to be doing.
It's basically, the town has an open forum every month by virtue of the franchise agreements that you've got in place with Time Warner. The last time the franchise was passed was done for a limited duration, as you all may recall, it was three years. And within that franchise agreement, there is a specific provision that allows for a public forum for purposes of coming forward to voice any concerns, grip, comments, questions, so those things can be gathered together right at the Time Warner, when the time comes the franchise rule is not addressed by the town council.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wants to speak for or against the Time Warner community? If not, we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda.
I think my three or maybe four HD channels are awesome.
And I think Spectrum's attitude is terrific. I called Spectrum and asked them to talk to me about reducing my cost of my internet stuff. It was $266. The girl told me we used up all this stuff, all this stuff that we offered, and we don't have anything else to offer either. have anything else to offer you. And I said, in other words, you won't, you won't talk about reducing the cost. That's the way it is. And that was her exact words. Now it's too late. I'd like to see anybody come in here and get rid of that money.
Is there one else that's got a comment? It's time to move on. For approval of events, council meeting February thirteenth, to have a motion to adopt the amendments presented.
No move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? You're not called for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the approval of financial statements. You have a motion to approve the financial statements.
No move. Second.
Any additions or corrections? For questions, we'll begin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on agenda, the town manager's update on ongoing projects.
I don't have, you don't have a.
Okay. You don't have any projects? Is that what you're saying?
We have time.
See, you're here, isn't it? All right, so next is the committee conference updates, planning commission.
Planning commission did not meet this month. Not on that on the agenda in our legal receipt.
Okay, Training Depot Committee, Terry is out on a boat somewhere. And so we, I'll speak to that to a second here. We actually have a grand, a groundbreaking event at the Training Depot next Friday at two o'clock, is that right? At the Training Depot. And we're supposed to have some diggers. Terry's there and give you an update on the progress of the Training Depot. It's moving along quite rapidly, so we invite you down to the event on the twenty-third. Okay, next is on, sort of gave you an update there, Todd, on that update.
You did good. The completion date right now is targeted for July the eleventh. So we will have another event then, then after one that's Friday. So and that of course depends on how many windows they drop and break before they get them installed. How many rains, snowstorms we have, but the target date is July the eleventh, I guess.
Okay, next thing on agenda is something that's, we're going to wait on a little bit and Sharon Thomas for a move to get your update.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you for having me. And although the renovations have not yet started, we have been working diligently to get a proposal together and I'd like to actually bring a letter to you, if I may. It says, Dear Sharon, Barter Theater is excited about your potential new venture of creating a new stage in Tazewell for the performing arts. It was great to see the facility to be developed and to discuss your plans. This letter is to express Barter's desire to partner with you to provide the appropriate Barter Theater touring productions. And he goes on and he says that, to his knowledge, there are no competing venues in your market allowing Barter to offer touring productions to your venue without restrictions. As you know, we are happy to assist you in any way that we can as you develop the plans and take on the renovation of your facility. Having a strong community center and venue in the Tazewell area seems like a great addition for the good folks of your community. We are looking forward to working with you as you move forward with this facility in benefit for the Tazewell area. We will look forward to having Barter Theater performances in Tazewell in your newly renovated venue. So the Barter's come to Tazewell. It may just be probably starting out. They do a production in the spring. They do a production in the fall. They do at least three productions through the youth barter and they do more productions during the holiday season. With that being said, that's the reason the renovations have not started. We had to see exactly what all we've got to do. In Cinema One, we've got to build a stage. We're going to build a stage in there that's going to be thirty feet long by twenty-five feet deep. In stage, in Cinema Number Two, we're going to take about twenty-five feet of the depth of that and put all the backstage stuff in there. We're going to have dressing rooms. We're going to have a green room. We're going to have a kitchenette, everything. I went to the Barter and toured their facility inside and out. He came to Tazewell, entered the facility out here and it's going to be a working, good relationship between the two of us. In addition to the Barter coming up there, we're also going to be able to show movies, regular movies in Cinema One and Two. Cinema One, of course, will have a retractable screen that will come down. We are going to pretty much gut the place for, for use of a better word. We want to have a hundred and fifty nice, comfortable reclining cup holder chairs in each cinema. We have the intentions of stringlining major sporting events in there as well. In Cinema Number Three, the plans are at this time to turn that into more of the entertainment center of it. Our business will be called Tazewell Cinema and Entertainment. In Cinema Number Three, we are hoping to have a low-scale trampoline park and an arcade. So we got a lot going on.
Very good.
Things are happening, yes.
So Sharon, it'll probably open up in about a couple of weeks now.
Next one.
Do you have a target, do you have a target?
At this point, we don't, right now, we're working with the architectural scale. Of course, we've got to make sure the stage is safe as far, you know, we've got the appropriate amount of fire exits. We've got to make sure that how the, considering we're now going to have to put a sword to the back of the building, how the lay of the, all that is. We've got to have it re-surveyed again.
If it takes a couple of months.
She looked at you real funny there. Okay, we'll move on. Counsel appointed committee discussion.
Okay, I've got a couple of positions open. I'm still working on, on one. The IDA, we found out recently, Scott Cole, his residence is outside the corporate limits and we're working to, he actually requested to do a family adjustment. He's, he absolutely loves serving on the IDA and I'm telling you, he's an asset. So we are going to address that appropriately. It's going to take some time. And I've also got a vacancy, I think, on planning commissions. Unfortunately, another very valuable individual is no longer living in the town of Tazewell with this charity purpose. So she's unfortunately living in Richland. Unfortunately, I mean that both ways. So we're going to have to address it. If you've got a recommendation for anybody that could replace.
Or if anyone wants to volunteer, if you'd like to serve on one of these committees, please contact.
Yeah, I'll let them know if y'all got a recommendation, some layover column. We do need to feel that, feel that position. I'll get back to you on the IDA position.
Not only do we have theater, we got another thing on the agenda. So Brad, would you clean this up today?
Certainly. About roughly two years ago, we recalled the town acquired the Bull and Island property from Huckleberry Development as a donation to the town. And within the last couple of months, with your direction, we have provided for and actually transferred the property now from the town to the IDA. That deed was reported earlier this month and of course, the IDA is working in negotiations with another company who's looking to renovate the Bull and Island property. All those documents have been prepared and draft for the IDA to consider and hopefully close on that within the next thirty days.
We'll talk about that again at the end of the evening. You'll come out tonight and vote.
Okay. Next is the bid on the Barnes property for the Walton Trail.
And as you're also aware, we've been working on basically acquiring an easement from the Barnes family, many of the parts took off to the west and adjacent to the Lincoln Chapel property. We've been working with Frank Barnes and his brother Jeff and a few of the attorney in Richmond to get the specifics lined out for that particular agreement with them. Just after walking the property two weeks ago with Donnie and then talking with another, let's see, cattle farmer who has leased with the Barnes, have made a few more adjustments to the lease agreement that was sent out to Frank and Jeff actually earlier today, they had consideration. In theory, everything is agreeable and work, what's the matter, working out the details on some logistics about the specific location and some issues to deal with the cattle and water access and some troughs, some things of that nature. But we're, hopefully, within the next thirty to sixty days, we'll put the laws in there accordingly, get back with me concerning any other concerns they have. But hopefully, within the next, again, one to two months, we'll have a finished product so we can start breaking ground, getting that project in place.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to our work session. We'll move on to the new business, the spring cleanup, which will be May.
Yes, it approved.
Yeah, it's actually May, the month of.
Just the whole month.
The whole month of May. They have a motion to adopt May as the spring cleanup in town Tazewell.
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? You're not called for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Recreation Grant Resolution. And I get to read some more. Okay. Whereas the Tazewell Lily Park is owned and is developed by the town Tazewell as a recreation facility serving the residents of the town of Tazewell and adjoining localities. And whereas the existing access road does not provide or afford access for this facility and is deemed necessary that the improvements be made. And whereas the procedure governing the allocation of recreation access funds set forth in section thirty-three dot one dash two-two-three of Code of Virginia requires joint action by the Director of Department of Conservation and Recreation and the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And whereas a statement of policy agreed upon between the said director and the board approves the use of such funds for construction of access roads to public owned recreation areas. Whereas town, Tazewell Town Council has adopted its own ordinance pursuant to Article Sec seven, section fifteen-two dash two-two-eight-four, chapter twenty-two, title fifteen-two of Code of Virginia. And whereas it appears at this town council that all the requirements of law has been met, permit the Director of Department of Conservation and Recreation to designate the Tazewell Lily Park as a public recreation facility and fully permit the Commonwealth's Transportation Board to allow funds for access for this public recreation area according to section thirty-three dot one, two-two-three of Code of Virginia. And whereas the town council agrees and keeps the intent of section thirty-three dot one dash sixty-three of Code of Virginia to use of good offices to reasonably protect the settings of the, or also of the, of this road leading to and within the areas of recreation commitments. And whereas the town of Tazewell acknowledges that no land disturbances activities may occur within the limits of a proposed access project without the permission of the Department of Transportation as condition of the use of the Recreation Access Fund. Whereas the town of Tazewell hereby guarantees that the necessary environmental analysis, mitigation, and the fee is provided away for this improvement in utility, locations, or adjustments if necessary will be provided at no cost to the Virginia Department of Transportation. And therefore, be it resolved that the Tazewell Town Council, the town of Tazewell hereby request that the Director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation to designate the Tazewell Lily Park as a public recreation area and recommend to the Commonwealth's Transportation Board that the Recreation Access Funds be allocated for an adequate access road to serve said park area. And be further resolved that the Commonwealth Transportation Board is hereby requested to allocate the necessary recreation access funds to provide a suitable access road as herein before described. Be it further resolved that the town manager or his destiny be authorized to act on behalf of town council to execute any or all documents necessary to secure the funding to, through the Recreation Access Program up to, but not exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar state funds. Do I hear a motion to adopt this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Any questions? You're not called for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's the last one, three tonight. Okay, next on agenda is the approval of the PSA true-up.
Okay, council will recall, every year we do a true-up on the sewer plant and we've submitted a true-up to Brown Edward. We haven't got a response back from that, but it's about around three thousand dollars that we will owe in the true-up. And of course, the water plant does a true-up. It's done by the TSA. Our true-up this year is showing forty-five thousand dollars that they'll owe us. And just, just to let you know how that works, it's kind of pay now, pay later. Any true-up, it is the same way. It's like your AEP bill if you're on a budget. If they miss you one month, you know, you catch up. So it's not, it's not like we're losing money or making money. But we have historically had to pay at the end, which means that our rates throughout the year are lower, which during this time of the year, you know, June, July, this, these four months in a consecutive are real slow. So it helps that when it comes to revenue. But they owe us this year forty-five thousand, four, four ninety-eight.
Yeah, a little bit better. I believe we take, take action.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a vote now?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Approve the true-up. You have a second? Approve the true-up.
Second.
Any other questions?
I think we need to let Daniel Rose know that we got money this time.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that. I will.
All right. Any other questions? You're not called for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is on the agenda, the vote initiative vehicle to Bluefield College.
Okay, Bluefield College for a number of months. I think you've been working with the chief of stadium. You may know a little bit more about it than I do. College is just looking for a vehicle. I think they're asking, maybe want to auction it off. Is that correct?
It was one of those that we was taken out of service because of the mileage. I had a few problems with it and I think the problem has been resolved, but due to the fact of mileage, it was, it was being rendered out by our folks.
So I just get a motion from council to proceed with that nomination and be sure you add to your motion that the how must drive it for four miles back. Before we do the.
One thing would have, actually, it wouldn't be often, the reason for that. We had an old one, we have two campus police officers now, two full-time and a part-time. We had an older model vehicle that has kind of died out for the holidays. So we were kind of searching around to see if any localities or anybody had, especially here in the county, since we're in the county, one that was aged out or set and that we could repurpose and use. And we see now, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen here locally, but we see what's happening around on campuses and on, at schools. So we, right now, we don't have what we would consider a proper way for our officers to get around, but we're, they need to get there quick. We've got a gator that we're using in lieu of finding another vehicle to suit the form of use. So it will be used on campus there.
What model?
Two thousand and six, I believe, sir.
Have you had a motion to?
Chevrolet.
It's a Chevrolet. It's an Impala, right?
There's a picture of it in the car.
Chevrolet Impala. Chevrolet Impala, two thousand and six, to Blue Hill College.
I make a motion and we give it to the Blue Hill College?
Second.
With an as-is.
Okay, guys, a motion, you have a second. Any other? Call for a vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on agenda is the trough farm.
Should be Larry White.
No, it's for Sunset.
Okay. We need, let's tape it back if I can.
Okay, we will, all right. Next on agenda is a donation process. I guess Larry or?
Yeah, Mr. White, you're right here.
Before I say anything, if some of you folks weren't in attendance last week, but I want to applaud Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dave, ladies and gentlemen, the Town Council. Tazza hosted a state semifinal basketball game last week. The reason our site was selected, we have, Tazza Middle School has the largest seating capacity of any gym this side of Roanoke. You may not know that, I didn't know that prior to this, but that's how we got it. They had two days to plan and I tip my hat to everybody involved, but I want you to know, ladies and gentlemen, that in this room, we weren't in attendance, the town crew parked the cars, security was fantastic, the town police got a tremendous job, the county did a tremendous job, state police were there as well, but it went off flawlessly. And it shows what we can do in our little town. And I hope that we'll do something similar in years to come, take utilization, make maximum utilization of the facilities we have. So I come to you tonight on behalf of Tazza Baseball Buschers and Tazza Little League. Tazza has been selected to host, has a host site for a state senior league baseball tournament here starting in July. We'll start on July the fifth and end on July the eleventh. If you are looking for a place to promote tourism dollars, I cannot give you a better place to do this. I'm asking, we are asking, for a five thousand dollar donation. We're asking the town, we're asking the county, we're asking the school board for the same commitment. What we will do with that fifteen thousand dollars is we will immediately order two scoreboards. The scoreboard is on Little Field Field now. We purchased our group in nineteen ninety-eight and installed it. It cost us twenty-five to twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars when we bought it new. It is a thirty-six feet wide scoreboard. We wanted to build an impressive facility and I think we did that when we built that complex, but we wanted to build a rear-end on the scoreboard. Now, we had in mind to refurbish the scoreboard and to convert it to all LED. Well, as we tried to refurbish it, we first put all new bulbs in it. Last year, Mr. Roberts was kind enough to come out and he and Mr. Lambert put all new bulbs in the board. And about ten days later, you would have thought somebody could have that there with a shotgun. It's just old, it's twenty-plus years old, it's worn out. We looked at refurbishing it, but we can get a better deal actually to buy a new one, just a new LED board. So the two boards combined will cost us about forty thousand dollars. In addition to that, we need to build a press box on the upper field, because there is one there now. And the press box, we figure we're probably going to have a push line of thousands dollars in the project. Like we have in the past, the way we paid for the old scoreboard, or the old scoreboard, excuse you, where there's an advertising panel three feet tall, thirty-six feet wide, and we sold sponsorship spots on that board. We sold enough sponsorship spots on that board to pay for that board. It's a one-time sponsorship fee and it lasts for the life of the board and how long that board lasts. We'll do exactly the same thing on the upper field and the lower field. That's still not going to be enough to get a shot of wood, so we're probably going to have to have some other fundraisers. The reason I'm making the request for fifteen thousand dollars, before we can place the order for five from you again, not fifteen, but the reason I'm making the request on behalf of the group to try to acquire fifteen thousand is so that we can have the money to pay down payment for all of those two scoreboards. We have to have our work finished out there by May, because they'll come, the official with the Little League organization will come and look at the facilities. And if they approve, then we get to have the state tournament this year. Now, that means we'll be bringing between thirteen and fifteen teams to Tazza. We'll reap the benefits out of here, but so will all the other surrounding towns and counties, not only in Virginia, but in southern West Virginia as well, because there'll be people staying in Whistful and Roanoke and driving to play the games. There's going to be a lot of people coming. We're trying to make it as impressive as we can, because we want to qualify to have additional tournaments here in the future. So on the upper field, even though we are a ways from water and sewer, we plan to have bathrooms up there as we build on this. So pretty good undertaking for us, but we certainly appreciate your consideration. Thank you. Any questions?
I think I've already got that package. We actually have a budget work session there, it's there, it's over.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Next on agenda is special announcement.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure everybody's already aware, tomorrow morning, right here, ten AM, there'll be a special announcement at Sunset. So if you got an RSDP from that, just be sure to respond to it. We're looking forward to what's going to be announced. I was leaving a paper right now. The next one you have on the main, here, Mayor, we had a nine hundred thousand dollar bond for Route sixty-one that was floated several years ago. And we used that money, we used that nine hundred thousand dollars to offset a fifty-fifty revenue sharing grant that was applied before we're back, before mine, before mine's funded. We also utilized those funds during the dry times. And we paid that bond off in full a couple of weeks ago. So we still, just like any other local government, have about four months throughout the year where revenue is short and we have to look for other sources. And in years past, I borrowed money and, you know, paid it off and revenue started to come in. Both National Bank and Community Bank both need approval from the Town Council to keep, we've got one line of credit, I'm looking for another, and hopefully I can, both of them will equivalent around for eight hundred thousand dollars. So just need approval from the council to proceed with that, just need a vote to move forward.
Want to see two different votes over one?
Just, just, just one vote would suffice.
Eight hundred thousand for each bank?
Not, 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 a total of eight hundred thousand, what I'm looking for. Now, I might not get that, but I'm going to try.
I make a vote.
I think, I think we probably need to designate the amount of whatever there, what you're saying, because that.
Well, you can maximize it at four hundred, permanently, per bank.
Four, okay.
Well, that way, though, if you need six hundred thousand, you'd have to give two backs.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to get it from one. I already know that. This deck is kind of stacked already, yeah. But up to four hundred thousand is what's suffice for the vote back.
Okay.
Motion to approve. What I said, right?
Yeah. Second, that motion.
And you've got a motion in second, you have any other discussion? Here none, call for a vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody sign here?
Now, one more thing, that I probably left earlier. Last year, the events that we had on Main Street, Seven, had approval from council to serve alcohol. They have to go through the ABC process, but I would like the council's unanimous support to do the same thing with the brew when there's events on Main Street. That way they don't have to keep coming back here, back here to see you.
Yeah, things not there.
So they'll, they'll, they'll follow all the ABC guidelines, but the league needs them from having to come see you every, every time there's an event.
Now, is your matchup different? Is it going to be restaurants so that the people on normal days can sit out there?
Yes, it's bonded.
So it's, yeah.
But we get like the street out front, but not bonded. So we're going to use that to require a special license.
I didn't see how you got your.
So just in.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Can we just make it for any, any business?
I didn't think we approved that one for Seven, last year.
Yeah, so we did.
Yeah, this is just where they painted off Main Street.
Yeah, can we make it for any, any restaurant, any licensed restaurant on Main Street?
That's fine, so we don't have to revisit this. Yeah, I'll let, I'll let, I'll let ABC know.
It's important to note that you guys are just essentially giving us approval to seek approval through the ABC. That's all you would be saying, right? Right?
Yes. Until the council turns over, then we need, can we make the motion that's a blanket motion for any business? Or you can do them one at a time, because right now they're all going to guide us to breweries.
But just, so we don't have to keep revisiting this, though?
Okay.
If there's a main street that is.
You guys are already here.
That way you can, you rent, I mean, that.
Yeah, so. That's fine. So just make the motion, I recommend that your motion be worded to where any business located on Main Street, if there's events that are handled by the Town Council.
Provided they have an ABC license.
Well, that's what you're saying, we're never going to permission.
They have the ultimate five, I say so, you're correct, Mr. Man. Even if you told me I could, if they tell me I can't, I can't. Yeah.
Now, what I'm saying is that they have an ABC license.
So we don't want the Methodist church having to worry.
You got a problem with that?
I just know what, I just know what Antiguo do. That's one motion.
Make the motion.
A second.
A second. Any other discussion?
Well, we might want to actually say it.
I thought we had a motion in second before.
We did.
Yeah.
I lost it there.
We just say this.
Chris, all you do is withdrawing on, withdraw in, withdrawing second. Let's go back to the first one.
We'll make a motion.
If I got a motion in second, who's got a vote on? If I got a vote on. If it's right. Say aye. Aye.
Thank you, Todd. You go away from back there. Okay. Any other things you brought for council?
Yes. Todd, I would like you to explain one more time.
I'm ready. I'm ready, go, wait.
The nine-one-one, okay.
History. I drive my best, get my hand, stay.
I wanted you to say while he was here, I'd done this.
Now, I'm going to go over this a little bit and then I'm going to let Chris pick up and information, but I can remember twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, H.S. Cottrell was the sheriff and I was at the time working for Bluefield. I can remember getting called on me and pushing, pushing Bluefield to do what needed to be done to be nine-one-one address. Okay, so this, this nine-one-one address went on for twenty-plus years. The county adopted it September sixteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, was when they adopted it. And the whole idea was to get on board with the rest of the world when it came to address. And that is a fact, get on board with the rest of the world when it came to addresses. So when you have police officers go to the academy, you have EMS, when they, when they train, they're trained to know how to hear their dispatcher, they're trained to know how to function on a route under pressure, they're trained to know how to follow numbers in a sequence so that they can get to a residence in a, in a matter of reasonable time to do their jobs efficiently. Well, the Town of Tazza, you can go down a street and on this side would be house number one oh two. Across the road directly in front of it might have been five hundred. It had no rhyme or reason and there were a ton of instances where it was very hazardous. It became very sticky. So the county adopted it and pushed every, every town in the county to follow suit, obviously, to jump on board. So we did the same thing. We, we did the same thing. We adopted word for word. So here's the counties, anybody who wants to see it, you can see it, you can get it off the county website. And here's the town, they are identical except one of them says Tazza County, the other says Town of Tazza. But with that being said, there was nobody holding a gun to the town's head saying, "You must do this." But common sense and reasonable logical thinking, we knew it was in the best interest, mine changed too, I didn't say it was hacked or it was painless, but it was in the best interest that we protect our, our citizens out there to the best of our ability, and it took some address changing to do so, and some street renaming to do so. So we are the only town in the county today that has one hundred percent completed that task. And I've heard complaints at least maybe, you know, five to ten a month, Chris, so I know, I know the, I feel for you, I understand, understand that I will make a promise to you the way. And then you complain, you'll get complaints about why the water's called a dock apart or something. It will, it will pass in time, but I want to say for the record that there was not a gun held to our head, it was twenty years worth of pressure for us and, you know, we delayed, 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 and we're the first town in the county to have fixed our address to where it makes sense. Now, Chris is going to add to this and give you some examples. And I know Cindy down there is probably chomping at the bit to tell you why it needs to be done. So Josh and the sheriff, if he knew what was going on, I guarantee you, he'd be right here, in chief of police. And so he just made, it was common sense, but Chris, go ahead.
I'll go over some examples here. This is Blacksburg Street, where four of them is. First house on the street is four oh seven. Where is one hundred through three now? What, in there? You got.
Now, the reason that's important is keep in mind when they go to training, they're trained on the street. So if they're not trained, by the way, I'll start at six hundred, that's perfect. And you get a lot of comments from people in the community, they'll say, "Well, I've lived here for fifty years." If they don't know my address by now, well, guess what? The people, the rescue squad, they have not been employed for fifty years. You know, the police officer, it might be a rookie older, he ain't been employed for fifty years. So, you know, it just made, it made sense to fix it. And then once again, I just changed mine too. One more step.
You had to do the whole town, you could have just fixed one street, because then the fire department would have to remember what street is changed, what street happened. You got a house here with five forty-six on it. Pete's address was five forty-six and a half. Down to Hillsboro, where Chris pointed it.
We can do this all night long, we can spend as much time as you want to with this mess.
And those are the ones they don't recognize. There's a lot of possum hollow roads that they.
Oh, I'm telling you, we could go on and on. While he's looking for that, Depot Street's another good example. What was it? Was it Depot Street?
Depot, where the other house was Depot and the other house was Rowland. They couldn't decide on what the street name was.
Plus the fact that we had streets in town named the same as the county had streets. And one lady in town came to me and complained that she had to have her medicine, because she was a very young woman, she's passed away now, but her medicine was being delivered out of Rowland.
It goes from one nineteen to two forty-four right there. Yeah. Harden Street and Doll Rock.
Doll Rock, yeah.
It was really messed up. Now, Doll Rock, you know, got rid of the western, it doesn't change it from a residential drive, started Doll Rock right off in Castle. And the numbers now were charred hearts out of the county, they almost match up exactly with what we started at the beginning of Doll Rock. So it's all, the numbers come from early, I can't make up these numbers, it's all based on five point two eight feet for every number. So you start at the beginning of Rowland here.
Anybody can check this out, but if it don't, if it don't work, I want you to come call me. Anybody can check this out, because if it don't, if it don't work, I want you to come call me. Not call me, call Chris. Y'all, y'all listen to what he's getting ready to say. And you can, you can check this out and be sure it works.
If you start right here and measure in feet to his driveway, it should be, uh, five point two eight feet times six. That's where the one oh six, well, let me rephrase that. This is the new address.
Get it right, everybody listen.
Yeah, I remember. One thirty-five is correct, the new address. So that should equal the feet from his driveway to the main Big Castle Road.
That's Big Castle and Harman, I assume, right?
Yeah. Now, the old system, it wasn't like that. It was just numbers. Now, Carmen Street, some of the people probably did have their address changed three times in the past fifteen years. For one thing, right here at Walker, that's where the counties are. Now, from here out, it's all county addresses, and they went ahead and done it in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, whenever they done it. So all these people out here probably changed. And not all of them changed, because they didn't go with the remaining numbers. You got two thirty mile and one twenty-two. Now, this is the new system.
Now, you take, now think about that for a minute. Look at it, look, you, you take that right there, and you take a rookie, uh, E M, E M C driving an, an ambulance trying to find you.
You got houses here that, uh, two sixty-eight and all of them up the road.
You don't have to be a rookie. Twenty, I've done this twenty-one years, and there have been times where we could not find the house.
It's on fire, law, it's on fire.
Right. You don't have visible, so we have, have.
It was, I'm telling you, it was a cluster, the entire town. And what Chris is saying is if you were in the county, you had an address, but when we annexed, Chris, it changed. And then we do it again. So, um, I will say it's nine nine one option correct. I was, now, there's going to be some messed up out there. And I fixed a lot of it. Messed up where the post office has kicked stuff out. It's like Doug Hes, we gave him new addresses. I don't know the letter down, the post office kicked it out. Uh, he had to change his address, which I called him within a couple of weeks. But the people that's had addresses out on Harmon and Doll Rock, they've probably been changing the past fifteen years or so. Annexation, and then, uh, we changed it for the last time, I hope. Remember, we'll do it anytime in my lifetime. Now, to go back to your.
We'll change it, we're.
To go back to your request, Chris, they, um, everybody was getting water beans. And, and we knew where you, we were going to get your tax tickets, too. We knew where you was in. It was not, it wasn't that the town made it a priority. Should we have made it a priority? Absolutely, absolutely, it shouldn't have been made, we should have made it. But I'm telling you, it was because of the support from the county. And county implemented it back years and years ago, nineteen ninety-seven. They had foresight and saw it, but it just took us twenty years to jump on board.
My, my street that I lived, I moved on last summer, my address was one oh two Elm Street. And the house that you get before, uh, my driveway, their driveway, on the mailbox was one oh one and a half. I mean, one oh two and a half. And it, it's also called, I get mail says Elm Avenue. And it should be Elm.
This is what he's talking about right here. This house was one hundred. So they run out of numbers, because one oh one was probably here before we readdressed. This is one oh one, one hundred and a half.
So now it's done.
It's done on five point two eight feet. But that comes from five thousand two hundred and eighty feet of model.
That's one seventy-one there.
So now, if you build houses between houses, there's an address for it.
Unless your houses are smaller than five feet wide, you're not going to run out of money.
New York law, code.
That's real time house.
And I don't, I wish it ran, did they? Yes, I knew it, I just wanted, so I'm trying to get signatures to run it. I've got a beating out there about this, so I don't know if I'm going to give you the signature. I'm like, I, okay.
Well, it's probably the thing for everybody. I say my head, Chris, but if you stuck to this, then I think it's an awful thing.
Absolutely, yeah. I would chew that. A lot more you say than most of you have in my house. You know, I have you. Five years, I've already got it. And now I can't remember my.
Do you think that's important?
So I'll tell you, this is, this is, this is by far the most amazing meeting I've ever had in downtown. Everything that we've just done, from walking past to the bowling alley, to the movie theater, to the recreation, to redo the park, the grant, to the, all this stuff in one meeting. I guarantee you, there's not another council in southwest Virginia meeting this month that has this much stuff that's happening in their little town.
That's not. We need to get more signatures. Just for that. We had asked to be placed on the agenda. Can we, can we? Or address the council?
You mean the executive session?
No.
The executive?
Or executive, whichever.
We're actually in the executive session.
Oh, dude, okay. Yeah, that's right. I didn't know, I didn't know which one you were saying.
Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, I entertain a motion for the executive session for consultation of legal counsel, perspective of business, perspective of business, consultation with legal counsel, and consultation with legal counsel.
I'll move. Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will be back.